Call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape Cod County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any communications?
Yes, uh, no, my deputy's gonna read it out loud.
This is from J. Stephen Nayer, Leventriff Wood Lane, Palm Coast, Florida. Dear councilmembers, we are writing to express some concerns regarding the land use plan section, specifically the issues relating to the courts. We live at the southeastern corner of Weber Court, 10917 Second Avenue. We understand the concern on the part of some of the court's residents with the shortage of storage space. At the same time, it was noted elsewhere in the report, the desire to preserve the heritage of Stone Harbor. The quaint nature of the courts is part of that heritage. Presumably, the current residents understand and acknowledge that heritage and the accompanying limitations on construction when they decided to purchase properties in the courts. The proposed plan represented in Figure 6.1 on page 21 of the report might work to preserve that heritage, but we are concerned about the potential impact of adding second-floor living space. Specifically, the courts are already densely populated during the summer months. Increasing the occupancy of the court structures will inevitably make the situation worse. Specific areas of concern are, number one, parking, two, disruption during renovation, and three, way of life. Parking. The parking situation is already crowded and potentially dangerous during the weekends in the high season, July to August. We can speak from personal experience, living full-time from June to October on Weber Court. During the summer, the parking on weekends is overcrowded. The regular municipal trash trucks are sometimes unable to navigate the street. Sanitation workers need to walk down the street in advance of the trucks, knocking on doors and requesting occupants to move their vehicles. We suspect that municipal fire engines, as well as other emergency vehicles, would also be unable to navigate the street. A large segment of the population during the summer appears to be renters. Adding more living space will increase the rental capacity of the homes and inevitably increase overcrowding. Part of the problem is that there are simply not enough parking spots for the influx of people. However, aggravating this assault, I mean, I'm sorry, excuse me, this issue is the fact that parking spots are not clearly defined. The court streets are narrow, one-way alleyways that were not designed to accommodate on-street parking on both sides. The residents, however, have historically resolved this dilemma by utilizing the 34-inch concrete sidewalks that line each side of the streets. Since there are no curbs, cars may be parked partially on the street and partially on the sidewalks, thus enabling vehicles to move down the middle of the street. The difficulty is that some occupants either choose not to park on these sidewalks or unable to do so because the sidewalks have been replaced by landscaping. In segments of the street where on-street parking takes place on both sides and the sidewalks are not utilized, the street is functionally inevitable. It has been suggested in the report that providing parking permits to owners could address this issue. However, parking permits cannot create more parking spaces. The additional cars still need to go somewhere, and the overflow will inevitably go to the adjacent numbered streets, whose parking is already under stress due to ongoing residential rebuilds. Disruption during renovation. It is reasonable to assume that major additions to a majority of the court homes will require significant changes to the supporting utilities, sewer, gas, electric, water, in order to support the increased occupancy. This will inevitably result in street excavations and large construction vehicles clogging the court streets. The way of life. It is obvious that the original court homes were not designed to accommodate more than two to four occupants, and the alleyways were not designed to handle modern SUVs, vans, and pickup trucks. Increasing the occupancy of the homes within the same geographic constraints will only result in more traffic congestion and overcrowding. It was noted elsewhere in the master plan report that old Stone Harbor is disappearing as Cape Cod cottages are gradually replaced with massive structures. The borough has wisely maintained the two-story limitation so that at least some semblance of the old look that makes Stone Harbor unique and different than Avalon is maintained. The courts are essentially alleyways and were not designed to accommodate two-story dwellings. Look down any of the court streets as they currently exist and then try to imagine how they will change. We realize that many of the court homes already sit next to large two-story structures that partially obstruct views and sunlight, but this will only get worse. As some court owners begin to add second stories, others will be under pressure to follow suit in order to preserve some semblance of sunlight. We have heard comments essentially dismissing these concerns. A summary is below. Safety. The first is that safety will actually be increased due to the superior construction of the renovated houses, new materials, compliance with current building codes, et cetera. However, we would guess that not every home would be renovated. The ones in most need of renovation may be, in fact, those that are not renovated due to cost, so the hazard will still exist and the increased number of residential vehicles will impede emergency vehicles. Overcrowding. It has been asserted that increased square footage will not bring about an influx of more people. It will simply make the homes more comfortable for existing owners. However, it appears that many of the homes are already rented out, and in fact, that number may increase as more owners opt to rent in order to cover the financial costs of renovation. Ask any realtor, one of the basic means to increase rental income is to increase the sleeping capacity of a unit. As such, the number of occupants and vehicles on the street will increase. We might add one related concern, noise level. We cannot see how increasing the square footage would do anything but add to the number of people packed into the court streets. While noise levels can be an issue throughout Seven Mile Island during the summer, it is certainly aggravated by the very close proximity of court homes to each other. Deja vu. It may also be useful to reexamine the original motives for the height restriction. It is interesting to note that there was a time when there was no height restriction on the court homes. Why was a restriction put in place to begin with? And why and what now has changed, such that the restriction has outlived its utility? We do not know that answer to this question, but perhaps the council members should be asking this themselves so that history does not repeat itself. We are presuming, based on accidental information, that the restriction came about due to the construction of a particular building on one of the streets that dwarfed all others and was out of character. It may have also created a parking crowding issue due to its size and occupancy. Here, we are only speculating. Presumably, the current advocates will counter that the same thing will not happen again. There will be restrictions, building code requirements, et cetera, to ensure that whatever additional square footage is allowed would not affect the ambiance of the street, parking, overcrowding, et cetera. This may be so, but the Borough Council would be prudent to require more specifics as to exactly what will and what will not be permissible before acting on this proposal. Do not leave implementation details to a later date. As examples, exactly what requirements will be in place to ensure that any renovations will not negatively affect the current parking capacity on the streets? Will the street-level sidewalks, which are necessary for on-street parking on both sides, be maintained? Will court homes only be allowed to build on the existing footprints? If not, will they be held to the same standards as current previous owners who were required to add on-street parking? Conclusion. Before changing the zoning law, we urge councilmembers to visit the court streets during weekends and high season and/or speak to the manager of public works, as well as the local fire department, to validate the safety comments above. And take a close look at Stone, Bauer, and Weber, which has the most grandfathered two-story structures. Then try to imagine how these streets will appear if the envisioned changes are put into place. Thank you for your attention, J. Stephen and Mary Jill Nayer.
Thank you, Carrie.
May I ask a question now? Am I correct that the planning board did have a meeting with the residents of the, of the courts?
The planning board did not. The planning board engineer, Paul Kates, he's here, he did.
Okay. And how was, how well was that attended?
Thirty-five, forty people, Paul? Can you come up to the podium, please?
And how many houses does that represent? You know, we can't count, uh, families.
Yeah, I had, um, I had everybody fill out, um, an attendance sheet. There was about twenty to twenty-two families represented, and it was about thirty-five to forty people. And then in addition to that, I had another, I think, close to fifteen homes emailed me, um, with questions and comments.
And when you look at the conglomerate of all of them, the people who attended and the people who emailed you, what's the general consensus?
Uh, the resounding consensus was four. Uh, I had very few people against some form of change.
Thank you.
And also, the majority weren't for unrestricted allowance of change. They were, you know?
Of course.
Parameters to keep within the nature of the courts, but allow them to expand.
Do you know what percentage of, uh, courthouse owners, homeowners, was represented? I don't know how many.
I think it was probably only about fifteen to twenty percent. I think there's close to four hundred homes on the courts.
Four hundred homes or four hundred people?
I don't think there's four hundred homes on those courts.
Is there not that many?
No, no.
I had about thirty-five homes represented.
And Linden Lane as well. It wasn't just the courts, Linden Lane folks as well.
Well, I count that in, in my.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they were, they were there as well.
More than that percentage?
I don't know how many homes there would be. Eighty? Less?
And the majority of the dissenters have been outside of the courts, people that back up to them.
And what's their reason?
Their reason for being against it is the same reason that the courts want it, is they feel that the courts' growing would impose, be imposing on their backyards, whereas those houses are already permitted to grow and they're imposing on the courts, so the courts feel like they're being overwhelmed. So there's.
And they, some of the stuff that was said to us, they felt like there was like a canyon effect on them. Everybody on the numbered streets is going up and.
And that's why, right now, the courts are at fifteen and behind them, they're at thirty-one, and we had proposed maybe a, an increased, uh, second-floor setback so that it would kind of bridge that. Right now, you've got this fifteen, thirty-one, and by doing a second-floor setback, it would kind of ease that street-side.
Right.
You know, and kind of maintain the character. And that's what we're currently looking at.
And you have a meeting coming up? When is that?
Monday.
Not planning, the.
The subcommittee had, we don't have a date on the books yet.
But there is a, a meeting that's going to happen.
Yes.
But yeah, and another, uh, just to address one of the main concerns I felt in the letter, um, the, it, one of the things that most of the people said that they, it wouldn't really add to the number of people they fit in the house, it would change the way they use it. A lot of these people have almost studio-style homes there where their living room's doubling as a bedroom, and they said basically by being allowed to move the kids upstairs into a second floor, you know, the living room would be maintained as a living room. It's not so much adding people, but just making it more usable.
Comfort.
More usable space.
Right. Thank you, Paul.
No problem.
Thanks, Paul. So I need a motion, uh, accepting that communication into the record. All those in favor? Opposed? Public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council can, may do so at this time by coming forward to the podium and stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's George Kaiser. I'm at 358 95th Street. And we had a beach, uh, event this year that I thought I'd recap for you. I don't know what the policies and procedures are, but I'll lay it out to you and you can determine whether, what fits right. We were swimming and my, uh, daughter-in-law, who's twenty-nine, had swum along a lot of the oceans of the world, came out of the ocean, and all of a sudden, she's got red and, uh, swollen, and it was moving across her face. Kind of a bad situation. So my son went to the lifeguard and said, "Do you have a first aid kit?" "No, man." "Do you have a EpiPen or something like that?" "No, man." "Is there a first aid station here?" "No, man." So us living here for a long while knew what we had to do. I had a car parked in a parking lot. My son took my daughter-in-law to the, uh, emergency room in the, uh, hospital. They didn't even ask for the insurance cards, she looked so bad by then. They put her in, put her on an IV drip of antibiotic and steroids. It took about twenty minutes for the red and the heat to go out. Uh, they didn't have to puncture her throat. Uh, it took about an hour for it to go down, and she was on a steroid for a week and a, and a antibiotic. Uh, it was not related to this sewage in Wildwood. It happened about three days before that, that break. They don't know what it is. There's a lot of orgi, organisms, I guess, in the ocean, just like you hear about amoebas in the, in freshwater areas. Uh, I bring this to your attention for a couple of questions. One, I don't know what the standard procedure are for the lifeguards to tell people when there's an emergency happening on the beach. Two, I don't know what the first aid situation is. Do we have a station? Is that what, we usually go to 95th Street. Three, should they have some kind of prote, procedures about EMTs? You know, getting somebody to the hospital or not. For us, it wasn't bad, 'cause we lived here, but for somebody that was a stranger to Stone Harbor, that could be a pretty frightening thing, and, and minutes meant a lot in this particular situation. So I just wanted to make the board, you know, the town aware of that and say, you know, what, you know, what is those procedures that, that you arm the lifeguards with to go through in a situation like that? So if it happens in the future, uh, someone doesn't get or die or something.
Well, can certainly bring it to the beach patrol captain's attention. Um, I would, it has been my experience that the lifeguards render first aid and they notify the police, who notify the rescue squad, and it, and a whole response gets put into place. Police officers arrive first, and they've got necessary things like oxygen and things for airways and so on and so forth, and they're backed up by an ambulance, and we do have the, the ambulance is, is available. It's not a matter of people running from their houses to get into the ambulance, there's actually personnel at the firehouse ready to get into the ambulance. So that, that's why I'm just wondering what happened here. What went awry?
That was anaphylactic shock.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and it can happen to anybody at any time, almost anywhere. And, um, that probably was, I'm gonna just say, the lifeguard did not realize what it was or what could come from it, but what Judy just said was, in a condition like that, you call 911. They can get 911 there in two minutes, less than two minutes to the beach. And, and although you did not panic, which you shouldn't have, you did the right thing. Um, the ambulance, I do think, has an EpiPen also. Um, it's just, you, you kept your cool.
Yeah.
Which was good. However, um, any kind of jellyfish, any kind of thing in the water like that can react differently, and for it to get to the face and the neck area.
Ooh, it was scary.
Yeah, it is scary. It's, it's an experience you, you, you don't wanna have.
And you can see it moving, literally.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you did the right thing, but I do think that if I said, "Lifeguard, I just need an ambulance," period, this is an emergency.
Yeah, I think.
They would've been there.
The procedure is the same as anywhere else, 911, they'll come to you.
See, you guys are comfortable with what you just said, but the person like us, who've lived here, I've been here since 1978, the, the per, the person that's gotta trigger that conversation is the lifeguard. "Well, no, we don't have first aid, but I can get you somebody here quick." That would be the right response.
Right. And, or your first thing is 911, then go to the guard.
Right.
"I need help." Activate the system, first thing dial 911.
Well, then maybe there ought to be, I don't know if there's a sign on the beach, I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah.
You know, in the calmness of where we are, I can see where that would make sense. So I think somebody needs to be put on notice.
Aren't the lifeguards in communication with home base?
Yes, then they have radios and they were right, right, and I could've, yes. So that's a right. I mean, I was, I, I was not there, so when you said to the lifeguard, "I'm having an emergency and I need help now."
Yes.
And he didn't pick up a radio and call for help.
No. It was a low, a low-volume response to something that was more of a high-volume issue.
Okay.
So I just, you know, whatever.
Unfortunate, okay.
Yeah, we just need to reinforce something, you know, or, you know.
Yeah.
To get that message across.
Well, this is also a training issue. I mean.
That's what it is.
A lifeguard should be proactive in a case like this.
Yep.
I mean, like I said, it's been my experience in this town, the lifeguards are trained, that, right. Um, so I mean, it's certainly something that's gonna be discussed with Sandy Posaco. And see what happened there.
You know, a lifeguard might easily have thought, "Oh, she's sunburned." Something like that. But I thank you for bringing this to our attention because it needs to be discussed.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, they're very active. They keep, they keep people, I have no complaints about the lifeguards, you know, in general. I've been here for a lot of years and they're, they're very responsive in that, but in this case, they weren't, so. Okay, thank you.
George, one thing before you go. What beach was it?
Uh, 95th, and we were down this way because, I guess because we have less population of lifeguards, 'cause it are harder to get, some days they're spread.
They'll get, yeah.
They're spread further apart, so it was probably 96th Street.
And what was the date of this?
It would've been about three days before the, the first thing I thought of went afterwards, I said, "Oh, man, what if that," 'cause I read about the, you know, the sewage situation in Wildwood, and I thought, "Maybe that, you know, had some bacteria." Matter of fact, the next day, I went up to the lifeguard, I don't know if it was the same one, I said, "What was the fecal, what's the fecal, you know, what's the count in the water? The bacterial count?" He said, "It's, no, it's, there's no issue." So.
It can be something that you eat, too. It's a combination of, of anaphylaxis, um, is, can be something you've ingested, something you've come past, whether, you know, it's.
Doctor said that is, that is usually, happens within a two-to-three-hour period. She hadn't eaten for like six hours, so it was something in that water, we think, most likely.
Possible, sure.
She said, "No, there's no," she's, she's been tested for allergies, she doesn't have shell allergies or anything like that, so I just think it's ingestion of something that was unfortunate, you know?
I'd keep an EpiPen at your house if I were you.
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah. Do we have one at the aid station?
They're not allowed to administer, I don't believe, a lifeguard is, it has to be an EMT.
To do what, the?
EpiPen. But most people that, that have allergies do keep them. I mean, they do keep an EpiPen, and it's, and it's amazing.
And you probably, yeah, and they were right at the firehouse, probably, with the EMTs.
They would have it there, huh?
They would have it on the ambulance, yeah.
On EMTs, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address mayor and council?
Good afternoon. Bob Charmella, 240 105th Street. I was gonna mention two topics I wanted to discuss, but I'm gonna add a third, if, if I may. I was struck and appalled by Grant's comments with regard to water usage and water waste on this island. My wife and I walk every day, anywhere between three and five miles, so I can safely say that I've probably crossed every square inch of Stone Harbor in my many, many years that I've been here. What I have seen that is most appalling to me, and Jill mentioned Band-Aids earlier, and I have a Band-Aid for the council to consider with respect to water usage. I believe that the foremost thing we need to do from a building owner's standpoint is to strictly prohibit any grass to be grown between the sidewalk and the street. I can't tell you how many times I have seen water waste, water literally running down the street for a little patch of grass that's being watered, one, two, I don't know how many times a week. Some of them are, it's every day. Person across the street from me, every single day, the water comes on at six o'clock in the morning, and it waters that little patch of grass, and half of it, two-thirds of it is probably in the street. So if you wanna pass one ordinance that'll create a, an immense factor in this issue is, is that, that particular ordinance. Just prohibit grass to be grown between the sidewalk, the outside of their sidewalk, don't care what they do inside, the outside of their sidewalk to the street. It would, it would be a pretty, pretty nice Band-Aid.
That's a good idea.
My second topic. Um, I would like to commend the council and commend the Natural Resources Committee for taking a stand with regard to the removal of trees in Chelsea Park. Um, I thought that was the, the proper, proper decision to make. As a, as a grandfather now, and two grandchildren here for most of the month of July, I spent a lot of time in Chelsea Park, living on 105th Street, and it is the only playground in Stone Harbor that has trees. So it would be, it would be a catastrophe if anyone were taken, any, any of them were taken down. So that's my two topics. And now I will speak on behalf of the Stone Harbor Property Owners Association. I am the president of that association, and we would like to request that a liaison relationship be made between our association and the council. I note that, um, most of the associates, some of the associations, Chamber of Commerce comes to mind, Museum comes to mind, American Legion comes to mind, that have that type of relationship, and we would like to have a similar relationship. What it would accomplish, I think it accomplishes two things. It accomplishes an establishment of a formal relationship, allowing an honest exchange of information between the association and the council. I think it would further embellish the open dialogue that we have generated in the last couple of years with the council to, on matters that are important to both the council and to our organization. So it is one that I hope, that we hope, as an association, you will look upon with, with favor, and I thank you very much. Questions? Thank you.
No, oh, thanks, Bob. I just think it's a good idea. I don't have a question. I think it's a good idea.
Open communications.
Yeah, which idea?
Is what?
'Cause you just gave us three.
All three.
Number three. I liked number one and I liked number two, but I think number three is easy.
Well, Reese has even said he would fill that role.
I would be delighted to do that.
So, I mean, it isn't, you're asking for basically a liaison to attend your trustee meetings and to be the first person you're reporting to.
Yes, whenever it's convenient. You know, we, um, we meet once a month, second Saturday. We've had some, uh, we've had some of the council members be guest speakers at our, at our meetings, and we, we saw the value in that right away, and that's why we thought that this was perhaps the second step in that relationship.
Okay.
I agree, I think it's a great idea.
And Reese has already said he wanted to do it, so what we'll do is, yeah, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll do a formal motion appointing you to be the liaison to the Chippewa.
Good, sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Anybody else want to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Moving on, ordinance 1555.
Mayor and council, I offer ordinance 1555 for adoption.
Second.
This, uh, this is the bulk trash, I'm sorry, I'm not doing this right. Mayor and council, I move that ordinance 1555 be taken up on first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1555 on first reading?
An ordinance amending chapter five, 466 of the general ordinances of the borough Stone Harbor.
So thi, this is the ordinance we've discussed in past work sessions that would allow an individual or a person to take some bulk trash off the, uh, the public property in front of a home, not permitted, of course, to go on private property. So I move that ordinance 1555 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that'd be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the third day of September 2019.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Yes.
Ordinance 1556.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that ordinance fifteen fifty-six be taken up for the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance fifteen fifty-six on first reading?
Amending chapter five sixty, the revised journal ordinances, freestanding signs, sandwich board type.
I'd like to move that ordinance fifteen fifty-six be passed on the first reading, published according to law, taken up on second, third, and final reading at the adoption of the mayor, meeting of mayor and council, which will be September third, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-one.
Madam mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand nineteen dash S dash one twenty-one for adoption.
Second.
This resolution is a refund to RTW Construction in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for the hydrant meter rental deposit.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-two.
I offer resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-two for adoption.
Second.
This is a resolution that's extending the grace period to until August twentieth.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-three.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand nineteen dash S dash one twenty-three for adoption.
Second.
This is, uh, this is a resolution approving the purchase of two new pickup trucks for public works use under state contract.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-four.
Madam mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-four for the purchase of a trash truck for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-six. Did I skip somebody?
It's all right.
Did I cut somebody off?
Mr. Dallahan.
Sorry. Sorry, Frank.
Yes.
Sorry. Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-six.
Madam mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand nineteen dash S dash one twenty-six for adoption.
Second.
This resolution is to refund Pete's sake cancer respurs, forty dollars for a reimbursement of a water usage for a, for a permit.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-seven.
I'd like to offer two thousand nineteen S one twenty-seven for adoption.
Second.
This is an ordinance that is reimbursing nine line items for, um, surety mon- monies, various refunds to builders.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-eight.
I'd like to offer two thousand nineteen S one twenty-eight for adoption.
Second.
These is, this is more performance surety money set for street openings to be re- to be returned, and there's five items on that.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-nine.
I offer resolution two thousand nineteen S one twenty-nine for adoption.
Second.
This is a refund of four hundred dollars to a person who reserved a space at the Arts and Crafts Festival and wasn't able, was unable to go because of her husband's health.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one thirty.
I'd like to offer two thousand nineteen S one thirty for adoption.
Second.
This is also a refund for the art and craft show.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one thirty-one.
I offer resolution two thousand nineteen S one thirty-one for adoption.
Second.
These are corrected tax bills based on the recalculation of previous assessments, reassessments. So these will affect years two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one thirty-two.
Madam mayor, I offer resolution two thousand nineteen dash S dash one thirty-two for adoption.
Second.
This resolution, um, states that the borough has fully complied with all state statutes with regard to the two thousand and eighteen audit of our books and finances.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one thirty-three.
I'd like to offer two thousand nineteen S one thirty-three for adoption.
Second.
This is a refund for lot grading permits that were given to a builder and to a pool company.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen S one thirty-four.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand nineteen dash S dash one thirty-four for adoption.
Second.
Uh, this, this resolution allows for prorating the rental of slips at the marina since the season's half over.
Discussion? Clerk call the roll.